Listening to your goals and dreams is our top priority at West Tennessee Bank. Benefit from our more than 100 years of experience and visit our Henderson branch today. West Tennessee Bank, focused on you. West Tennessee Bank is a division of Decatur County Bank, equal housing lender, member FDIC.
All present? There is a call in presence, so we will officially call a meeting to order. And our first item on the agenda tonight, we need a recommendation to accept the board's agenda.
I might motion to accept the board's agenda.
Say. Our motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Opposed? So moved. The agenda is approved. Now we'll look at the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve that.
I might motion to reapprove the consent agenda.
Second.
Right. Motion's been made in second. That has no discussion, so it is approved. Delegations tonight, I don't believe we have any here, so we do have some couple of spotlights or celebrations we want to recognize.
Well, you know, and again, I'd asked Ms. Briann about her schedule for coming to the meeting tonight. She's on vacation with her daughter, so I didn't say, well, forget your vacation. You come here and talk before the board. But again, since our last meeting in June, as it's reflected here in your packet, she was recognized as one of nine now finalists for the Teacher of the Year award. That means that she's got a guaranteed trip to Nashville for the banquet. It's a really nice event. I've had an opportunity myself to attend for two other teachers in the past. So it is a tremendous benefit to us, recognition for our school district, for the high school. It's a, she's a quality teacher, Clay can admit and testify the same. She will have further questions. It's a, she's got to go to Nashville and do some direct Q and A with, during the interview process with people who are there to ask those questions. And then coming out of that, of all those nine that are recommended for this honor, they'll pick from that three grand division winners, and then from those three grand division winners, they'll select one of those three for the Teacher of the Year. And they do that all in the same event. So Commissioner of Education's there, all the dictators. I hadn't seen anybody from state government like a governor there in the past, but again, it's right there at Nashville, so nothing keeps them from not being there. But it's a very honorable event, and again, Briann's put a lot of good hard work in, and our students' success through the years under her teaching has been a big great mistake. Also, again, in all the packet is, you know, Ginger McPherson had those who competed at the, you know, we had the state winners here earlier in the presence. Well, from that state winner, they had another set of, well, another leadership conference, which was again, a virtual setting. And in that, we, as your packet reflects, her second place in medical reserve core partnership, Kennedy Holman, Madison Hopper, Ava Cox, and Jaclyn Haskins placed second overall. And this is second overall, this is at a national level, not a state level. And then also, Ireland Knight placed as a top 10 finalist in clinical nursing. And as it's reflected in that feedback from Ms. McPherson, that only one other student in our high school history in HOSA had placed in that top 10 as a finalist. So we are, again, very appreciative of the work that gets done at the high school, what the work that Ms. McPherson does, and others in our health science ed coursework, because they have some quality instruction, they give those students a good, solid, quality clinical experience to lead those guys and girls with aspirations to go into medical field. And it's been a blessing to include that. I would say that Chester County has ranked itself in the very top echelon of programs of study in the state in that clinical nursing because of their attributes. And, and again, through the years where they have had 100% completion in that nursing ed coursework for the CNA certification. It's a significant event, and it happens year in and year out. The expectations are high, and every year, Ms. McPherson and the staff that works with Ms. McPherson season three. So we're proud of the work.
So we celebrate those students and Ms. Smithy as well this month. The next one thing we're going to look at is, of course, with the new calendar, our fiscal year, we have a lot of new things taking effect from the state through legislative sessions, and they affect our board policy. And so we have some recommendations from the TSBA that have already been approved or recommended from our local policy committee. And since that comes from a committee, that requires no second, but we do want to open up the floor for discussion. If you want to preface that with anything, Troy, about these new policies we're going to be looking at tonight.
Well, and again, I appreciate the word that Becky and Mark did with me, because we had a long afternoon one day going through these policies. Again, our state legislators have done some significant changes this past legislative general assembly. And, you know, I'm open to discuss this further if there's any questions that you have. These will be updated. Some of these policies are additions to what we, well, we didn't have before. So there are additional policies added to our existing policy manual, but some are tweaks from what we had in the past. So I'm open to any questions. I'm sure Mark and Becky are chomping at the bit to offer their feedback also.
The first question I got on policy 3.205 security, and it says that the director has developed procedures regarding district cybersecurity. Have you done that, or is there a plan in effect?
Well, actually, they, along with the policy recommendations, they give some administrative recommendations also, which are the steps to go through the process. Now, I don't recall this one specifically for the security, but Stephen in the back of the room is the one that does the security checklists, and this is brand new. This is a new addition to our existing. You might want to talk, what's your security currently? Not talking about cyber, but what's your current security?
This year is the five-year review for our district for our emergency operations plan. And the State Board of Education, or TDOE, has a platform called Navigate where they provide you with a basic outline for your emergency operations plan. They are adding a cybersecurity component to it. So it will be there. They've not added it quite yet, but we've got cybersecurity steps in place, some steps in place, but I think their recommendations are going to help quite a bit.
On the, I have a question about policy 4.203, the family life education. What year or what age group would this court be required?
Based on my understanding, Ben, it's not respective of just one age group, because just about every school district, when we heard this coming through the ranks in the House and the Senate, is that we all have like a family and consumer science coursework, what we used to call HOMET, which includes family life training. But this is, it used to be only for those who had a certain teenage pregnancy rate. But now it's comprehensive where they're including all, and the way we understand at every grade level, you're providing some level. Now, again, as the students get older, then that will get more intensive with the type of training, such as when you have a standalone coursework like what we offered at the high school. But for the lower grades, I could see this folding in with the work that our counselors do when they pull grade levels together and have group sessions as a school counselor with those lower grades, elementary through middle school. And middle school will probably have more standalone time with it, because, you know, there are, there are issues in other districts and other parts of the state where teenage pregnancy does include the ages at the junior high or middle school.
On the same one, training and instruction, has personnel, have they been provided with training, or were they being provided with training before proceeding this instruction?
And again, with family consumer science, they already have that under their endorsement code for being able to teach those courses, because that's inclusive of that endorsement. For the lower grades, like the counselors, no, there's not been any formal training set aside just for this, because this was just a June release from this past legislative cycle. If we have anything that stands alone that everybody has to get trained, then that's where in the past where, and I'm not saying, I'm pointing to Mark, because Heather has been the one that has been more on the front end of making sure that we have access to all of these required trainings, that everybody, whether you're educator or support staff, where you have to go through and perform all these modules of training and have to have scoring, because like OSHA, or bloodborne pathogens, or anything that deals with child trafficking, those, any new requirements for all usually go through, and the platform is called Safe Schools, I believe, and that's where we all have access to it. And there's tracking that you can earn your certification, and Heather, who takes the initiative on it, can ensure that everybody who needs it has already gone through the training. Thomas Leach also is hands-on with that, that's it. But I have not yet had anybody say at the state level that that requires training for every teacher.
Any other policies with questions?
I have, 4.101.
Which one, sir?
4.101. It says that adopting this policy is not required by state law, but is that something I guess the TSBA?
Well, there is a new law that doesn't require a policy that also matches it, but that is a state law, that we have to have instructional, let's see, making sure I'm on the right page.
Okay.
Right, right, I'm looking at it real quick. Because I don't want to confuse this one with other state requirements now that it's come on this slide. You have to, you have to make sure that what instructional standards are being taught, what curriculum is being used is not aligned solely to the common core. I don't think that's this one. I think, well, let me pull, let me look at my policy real quick. Well, that is the one, yeah. Policy, the recommendation from the TSBA draft is what I'm describing, that only Tennessee standard, state standards shall be taught within the school district following are prohibited. Instructional materials, textbook, or supplemental materials created to align exclusively to the common core or instructional materials, textbooks, or supplemental materials that are marked or otherwise identified as common core, textbooks, or instructional materials. That's, that is a new state law that all of us adhere to. What they're saying is it doesn't require first, a policy impacted your own policy manual, but it's a, it's a step in the right direction. But this is a conversation we have with building principals, and again, I've talked to some other individuals too, to ensure that this is new legislation, and it passed late in the general assembly cycle. And this is just to make sure that there is not some, I would say, in the opinion of many, that some subversive type of learning or lessons are being taught without the approval of your administration vote at the school level and the district level.
Any other questions? Although there's several to look through, so.
If I may add to one, 4.205, this is one that, as Mark described, has got a lot of fill in the blanks. I just want to share with you, this is the one dealing with enrollment in advanced courses. I don't know what the backstory was to perpetuate this passing of this, of this, I'm trying to get my hands around the public act. But this is where there has to be some identifying factors or local requirements which would allow students to participate in honors courses, dual credit courses, industrial certification courses, dual enrollment, advanced placement. Number six and eight, Cambridge International or International Baccalaureate, we don't offer. Those are standalone, separate institutes that, that some school districts do follow or do participate in, but not everybody has to. But we do follow CLIP, that college-level exam program, with some of our courses. What I wanted to share with you was what was, what I entertained with Becky and Mark last, earlier, this, I guess earlier this month, that the local requirement, the statement that I wanted to use, because I don't want to say, and I would expect that both at the school level, leadership and school level administrators, educators would also agree. We don't want to have students feel like that they don't have the credentials or the ability or capability of learning these advanced courses if they so choose to take them. So what I have said in this, I don't want somebody, like an industrial certification course, that's just like our, like I mentioned with the CNA, that's just like welding, that's just like our automotive, and even to the side where it's the computer, the information technology courses which tie in with the computer coding. Some students have an affinity for that coursework that they may not realize the same equivalent grade level for, say, math, English, science, and social studies. You know, you may have a student that just excels in one of these courses, that in some cases looks like an advanced course, that if you looked at their past credentials or transcripts, they may not, may not be something easy to see as yes or no you'll find, or not find the success in that coursework. So I don't want to, again, if a student so aspires to take one of these courses, I don't want to limit them by saying, no, you don't have the right credentials, or your past experience was not sufficient enough. Because this is elementary, I mean, this is high school. This is not something we're talking about an Ivy League school where you have to have a certain GPA or a certain ACT or SAT score to get in the door. So here's what the statement is that I'm including, and it will impact all of these, it will be the same local requirement, that the Chester County, the local requirement for Chester County would include students to earn credits in prerequisite courses, which if, if somebody is wanting to take a dual enrollment course, say, in calculus, then what the counselors would deem as the prerequisite for that, they've already earned the credits. We're not having a student go from, say, Algebra I to take AP Calculus II. So it moves where they are moving up in the progression and have earned credits in that. But also, I'm a little bit unsure of why they say that the T cap scores must be included or may be included. So what I have said is they have earned T cap scores, because everybody will take a T cap. So again, I didn't, I wanted to make it more inclusive rather than exclusive with the opportunities. Again, we have students who have certain aspirations for future careers based on the, well, just like the youth science aptitude and interest inventory that you saw Darlene talk about a few months ago. And if a student starts to find that they may have a, an aptitude for something science-related or something that may be more math-related, and they haven't realized that in the past, never had the confidence in the past to even consider that, now, if they see that result and know that there are definite career paths that may be of high interest with them, then I don't want to say that their past academic experience is going to negate them that opportunity. That's it.
Any other questions on any of these policies? All right, if there are none, again, the recommendation does come from the policy committee, so therefore requires no second. There's no further discussion. We'll just approve these unless someone has any objection, all in one motion and one vote. So all of us in favor of approving these new policies into our TSBA board policy? Say aye. Opposed? Right, they are all approved. All right, the next item we're going to look at tonight is revisiting a discussion we got last month, and it was a recommendation to consider some adjustments to the student dress code. We talked specifically last month about hoodies, but in that discussion, we sent some things back. Troy, to talk to the assistant principals at the schools in effect about topics such as the tucked-in shirts and belts, and he got feedback, which has been shared in your board packet, and we'll talk about it, but do you have any, any, anything you want to share, the feedback you received?
Well, again, I went back to the same assistant principals that first solicited to me to consider the hoodies as an option for an adjustment to the dress code currently. Again, as our current plan, our initial plan was that when we go back to what some normalcy in our school day attire for the students with the removal of the requirement to wear masks or face coverages, then we were just going to go back to a more traditional dress code as it was from 1819 and before. But in the conversation happened last week, I went back the next day, talked to, through email, through, to Dr. Judd, and communicated it also. She's the one that replied back to me. But in that same email correspondence, it was also to Todd Lewis and to Wes McPhee. Again, in Dr. Judd's opinion, she was supportive of the adjustments of tuck or untuck was not a requirement, and also belt may or may not be worn. And from her perspective, it was, it was a, not insignificant, but it was a very easy fix or adjustment to the student dress code within the student handbook for those two things to happen. So, again, from her email back to me, and again, she's the one of the three who spoke to me through email, she was supportive of that decision to allow the recommendation to go back to where it's not requiring the tuck and it's not requiring the belt.
And there's also probably a sense, even of our policy last month, to add some clarity to that, because I know in the, following the meeting, there was a discussion, we communicated about what exactly was and was not allowed, really the placement of that hoodie policy, under the sweaters, sweaters and places, what can and cannot be on it. So maybe through this process, we can clarify that while determining what we're going to present tonight. So I want to just read the beginning of the dress code policy in 6.310, that really puts a stamp on that. It says it should be simple, appropriate, readily available, and inexpensive, and simple, and I think we definitely need to work on, people need to understand it without pretty face value. So is there any discussion, just kind of open the floor after you've had a month to think about it, get feedback from your constituents, and hear the response from the assistant principals on the path forward from here?
Well, I think the tuck and untuck and belt, no belt, is pretty cut and dry. A lot of the feedback I got on the sweaters were some of the school-provided fundraiser-type stuff, didn't have the small business card size, and that was the, that was the confusion of some of the etcher. They thought they could wear a hoodie, but it had to have the business card, small or smaller logo, like the sweater policy. But you could wear a spirit shirt that had a large logo. So could the hoodie have a large logo if it was a school spirit type hoodie? And that was the clarity that they were wanting, you know, as far as the hoodie question. The other was a tee-shirt. Some of the administration were allowing, I guess, as a type of incentive to wear a tee-shirt, as long as it was a spirit shirt. And some of them were under the impression it had to be bought through the school system. But there are so many of them. I mean, I bought my children fundraisers, there's hundreds of different varieties, it would be hard to determine which was bought through the school and which was bought at Walmart. So if you're going to allow it, are you going to allow any type of school spirit tee-shirt versus one bought through the school system? So.
That makes sense. My thinking on that, it's Chester County schools, it's Chester County schools.
That's, that's what I, I see.
Or organization, I'm essentially just a sport, but a school sponsor club organization.
So if we're going to allow any tee-shirt, if we're going to allow untucked shirts, no belts, if we're going to allow hoodies, could we just continue with the relaxed dress code that we had last year?
Basically, parents pick up where they left off.
Where we left off, yeah.
With the addition of hoodies.
I think if it's school-oriented, a tee-shirt is not terrible, because students wore them all this past year. If it says Chester County anything, I would be more active letting them wear that to school versus anything else, because in my mind, they're a sport for the school system by doing so. But at the same time, you want conduct and dress code to understand that. And one was revised because of the masks and such, but I think a lot of the student body and teachers enjoyed wearing the tee-shirt, of course. At the same time, you know, you got to have some type of conduct.
Consistency.
Yeah. But then, going back to your opening wording of the policy, simple to understand is what we need to achieve here somewhere.
Is there any, I don't know if you had a chance to look, or maybe Clay, you may know, is there any, was there any issue with the policy that we were under last school year as opposed to previous years where it was more restricted? Was it less violations? Obviously, you would think there would be, but was there less trouble?
Hoodies were an issue which is, which is addressed. I'll just say this, whatever the policy is, the kids are going to push the envelope. It doesn't matter where you set the boundaries, kids are going to push the envelope, and we place that. So if you relax it, they're going to try to wear, if you say they can wear a solid-colored tee-shirt, they're going to try to wear a multicolor. I mean, there's always going to be those that push it. So it doesn't really matter where you set it. We'll have to address people that don't follow the policy. So I don't think it was, it may have been a little less than we had to deal with because of the relaxed, but there'll always be kids trying to do, do one more thing, so.
Speaking of, is that easier to address if it's a school spirit shirt versus a polo? If we, if the policy reads you must wear a polo versus a tee-shirt, would it be less headache on you as an administrator to do one or the other?
I don't, for me personally, it wouldn't be any less. Now, for a teacher that's not focused on that, that's worried about, it might be easier for them in the classroom setting, but for me, in the hallway, watching kids down, coming down, it wouldn't make any difference one way or the other. But I think for teachers, it would probably be a little less headache, the tee-shirts versus the, well, I mean, example, if you see a kid in a tee-shirt, then you have to look, are, is it school-related? You know, then, so it's just another step, but we'll, we'll, we'll enforce whatever, whatever you guys.
We will need to keep the message, again, as you mentioned, Ben, and whether you intended to or not, what got us to go to this dress code to start with is because we were having some messaging on shirts that were still within, like what Clay said, within the, that was right there toes on the line with certain clothing outfitters that were pushing us because it was causing animosity between different groups of students. But it was within the scope of acceptable wear based on our policy at the time. And the best way to address it without facing a charge of violating their First Amendment rights, you had to come in with a policy that was clearly stated. Now, the reason why I bring that up, I think on the positive side, and this is just my feedback to the board, is that you can still, you know, again, and actually, one of, well, Ms. Halton yesterday said, if we're allowing the guys and girls to wear hoodies, how are we going to know if they got on a collared shirt or not? So that was a perspective that I did not think of at the time. Of course, that is given that they're going to keep it on the whole day, or the whole class period, the whole day itself. But I would still say on the positive side, that if you're going to wear a shirt, whether collared or not, talking about a crew neck collar, or, you know, getting very specific, not where it's required to have a pull-up style, it needs to be a solid color. And the only rule, just like what has been discussed, it has to have a spirited, a school-related theme message, whether it's business card size or across the front. Then you're limiting in your policy anything that could be considered subversive by certain groups, because there's no, there's no club, sport, and group or organization within the school itself that causes anger and hostility between groups. In my view, I don't know if that's true. You know, I'm not there every day like Clay is. But that, I would come at it from a positive side, to keep it a solid color.
I'd say solid color or school-related.
Yeah, and that would be, keep it simple.
And that applied to all, including tee-shirt, hoodie shirts, sweatshirts.
Sweater, everything. I think you just, I mean, if you make that umbrella for any type, then you don't have to specify, okay, with the hoodie, you get through this, that just makes.
I think that is what the clarification everybody wanted to hear, because I didn't want to, you know, jump on one wagon, because I'm trying to listen to everybody on your shirt. But it's, it needs to be one or the other. You either, you either wear a collared shirt or a spirit shirt, and it needs to be solid, and that'd be the end of it. Like I said, you open too many variables, they're going to press every one of them.
Well, they're going to press it anyway. But, but then you have consistency across whatever the top is, whether the top is a sweatshirt layer, a sweater layer, or just a shirt layer, you can say the same message and be consistent across the board regardless.
So you concerned if we do away with the belts, and you're policing everybody's pants around the bottom of their rear ends?
Yeah, I have a concern about it, but I, but I. Now, personally, I haven't seen it like it was. I don't know if the trends, it seems to I don't know if the trends, it seems the trends are more form fitting than it is more of the, I don't know. Is that the way it is playing?
I think it goes back to what I said earlier. There's, there's a few people that try to push, push the envelope. We addressed, I just, I go back to the, I think there's a portion in there that, uh, where they're appropriately fitted. I think that's a term.
Yeah.
That's what we, that's what we went back to when they had their pants way down, so.
Yeah.
Will they have a belt on or not, still gotta be appropriate.
Well, some of them would wear a belt to still push the envelope.
What's the big thing about not wearing a belt?
Especially your younger children going to the bathroom, you think.
Yeah, I know from lower grades, I know I've talked to some teachers, probably the same ones that you guys have talked to, the speed of kids being able to go, cause they all go together. It's not like at the high school where the five minute break between class and everybody takes care of their business on their own. You're having kids in third, fourth, fifth grade going together collectively. And it just saves the time for them to be able to get their bathroom breaks done without having to worry about unfasting or refasting a belt.
I think if we do wear the belt, we're gonna wind up with pants down to the knees at times.
Well, I think the kids are gonna wear them down to the knees, you're gonna wear them down to the knees.
Yeah, like Troy said, they put a belt on to hold them at a certain level, right above their knees.
And if we still have the policy, it must be the appropriate size. There's still some accountability.
Well, let me ask you, we're talking about tee shirts. Is there sleeveless tee shirts?
We haven't said anything.
It's in the policy, must be long sleeve or short sleeve.
Okay.
Under dress interference. So basically, it's not a, like a wholesale adjustment, it's continuing what was in place.
Yeah.
In addition to the hoodie policy we've already, you know, I mean, just to kinda sum it up, I guess, would be all shirts, sweaters, hoodies must be a solid color or school related. All bottoms must be solid color, no jeans, exercise, yoga pants, kind of, you know.
It becomes a problem in a certain area and we'll just have to address it again.
Correct. I can kinda put that in the form of a motion, I guess I'm allowed to do that, right? So I would make the motion that we adjust the dress policy to include no belt requirement, no tuck, untuck rule, all tops must be solid color, school related, all bottoms must be solid color, no jeans, no exercise, yoga pants.
We have been more restrictive with the bottoms, not just being a solid color, but they would be khaki black or navy. Now, that has been, I don't know if that's consistently.
Last year.
Okay, okay, alright, then, then, okay, then any solid color. Other than not inclusive of jeans, because again, the trends with the jeans, in my view, there's way too many fashionable jeans purchased off the rack that are more holy than, than the.
Less material than they are there.
Yes. And it makes it easier to share with public what the expectations are. So motion would be to continue the relaxed policy and also end them to that hoodie policy where it can be, you know, a full logo rather than the business card size, which technically that's how it was passed last month. So is there a second to that?
Second.
Any further discussion?
We are stating that the hoodies won't be worn inside.
Yes, that's, that'd be already.
Talking about the hoodies.
Yes, that's already included.
That's, that's what I thought was correct. Make sure.
The teachers were allowed to wear some type of scrub material outfit? Is that gonna still be allowed?
Well, this is a student dress code policy. Again, actually, the teacher dress code policy doesn't fall under the school policy or the school board policy. We have, you know, again, we made it inclusive with them because of the liberty and the requirements for the masks. But there's a difference between, in my view, with the students and the adults. The adults are paid employees and the students are not. They're there to learn. I'd like to see the modeling of our staff to be returning more to what it was previous. Uh, now, again, within our policy or, or within the procedures that the school has done, even with the employee handbook, that principals have the jurisdiction to have dress down days. They can have them at their discretion. And in some cases, they have used that discretion to include like fundraisers, you know, for a dollar or two, you can wear jeans today. I feel like that in many cases, especially with the relationship between a young teacher and a high school age or junior high age student, when those ages are closer than the difference between an elementary and a, and a teacher, then the dress can be that first impression that somebody across the aisle from me is a professional and not assume that that person is just a little bit older teenager or have that same level of respect for another peer rather than a leader in the classroom. So I like to see the teachers return to that consistency of their dress code because of that. But that's my preference.
From a school standpoint, is this gonna be a permanent change to the dress code or is this?
This, this.
What, what you guys are hoping on will change wording in dress code, then it'll be a permanent from there on out?
Well, until like what Norris said, something needs to be addressed. This is, yeah, this is gonna be, I guess, a restart.
Whether you like it or not.
It didn't make, it didn't make you good.
Well, again, I, I, I believe, I give a lot of weight to those, the feedback from the assistant principals. Like I told Troy last month, is I would never even consider it if they were comfortable with being able to enforce it and they all were, so that, that carries a lot of weight.
Able to enforce the hoodie policy?
No, no, the, the whole new dress code. They were asked about the, the belts and the tucks and all that and they were all fine and, yeah.
It will, obviously it's gonna be easier to enforce, it's less to enforce. But I think we get away from the original, I mean, if you go, go back to the, the policies, it's kinda unique in that it gives you some glimpse into the mindset of the board at the time when they adopted the policy. Actually, line 10 says rationale for change and part of that is, uh, find it. It's our belief that by keeping students a proper and professional standard of dress, it will aid the students in having a greater opportunity for success on exiting our schools as well as having a positive effect on students' self-esteem. There's a lot of good reasons that the policy was established the way that it was. I think there, I think those reasons are still valid today. And, you know, I've heard a lot of talk about, well, let's change this and let's do that. But I'm not real sure about why we're doing it. If somebody could say this is why we need to do it, and I understand that there's the issue with the bathroom breaks with the younger children, but we're talking about grades four through 12. I can imagine that that would be a, a huge issue to get to the bathroom back, get your, I mean. That's my take on it. And also I think we lose a little, if you drop down there, you get to line 20, it's promoting school safety. When you go to hoodies and untuck and no belt, you, you might as well strike that. We're gonna lose a lot of that aspect. Cause that just offers a whole area to, to conceal pretty much anything. That's my two cents worth on it. I, I, I've got a problem with it. Honestly, I don't even care what the students wear. You know, if they'll show up on time and put some effort into what they're doing, that's all I could ask. But, you know, apparently we, we have to have a policy and I think this is a good policy. I think it's served us well for a long time and I'm afraid to start making changes to it.
Well, I definitely believe the tuck or untuck is important because I would pick my daughter up at school every day and I see some awful uncomfortable young ladies coming out of the high school that would probably have much more self-esteem and young men too, that would have much more self-esteem about their day had they not had to have that shirt tucked in all day. And, you know, I'm doing it from a self-esteem issue. If I'm a student and I'm self-conscious and I have things physically, I think we're, we're helping them with that. And the belt, you know, if you got a hoodie, only knows if you have a belt on or not, you know. We already approved the hoodie, so that, you know, that if you have a hoodie over your belt, you don't know if there's one there or not. But again, I, I go back to what the assistant principals and the track record from the fall of this past school year. If this same policy was in place, none of those issues that I heard came to fruition. So what would be the issue of, of making that? I mean, I'm not seriously posing that question. Is that a good basis to, to promote this policy moving forward, this, the track record of the past year?
I mean, I think so. Like I said, their, their, their word is, is worth more weight than anything, in my opinion, the, the administration. Cause that, that's why we ask you guys to drop it to us. Clearly, if you thought it was gonna be a problem, you'd be here tonight saying, no, absolutely not. So that's what I'm gonna listen to. Now granted, what you just read, you know, I'm, I'm all for professionalism going forward, but with the same note to the self-esteem, you know, what was written then versus what self-esteem issues arise now. If it's, becomes a problem going forward, we can bring it back to the tape. I mean, they're gonna let us know right quick if something's wrong. If there's kids hiding stuff, they're gonna hide it. If you, if they had on a, a havoc, so, I mean, they're, they're gonna hide it all they can and try to get away with all they can. Granted, you're giving them a place to hide it, but the ten that are hiding something, there's maybe ten that are actually gonna make better grades because of their self-esteem level, so. I'm torn between the two. If it's a problem, I think we can revisit it later on.
I think it'll have to be revisited, but I'm, I'm ready to go along with it now. I think we will have to revisit it.
I don't, I don't, I don't have the impression of it, it's, I don't, we're not allowing our kids to be sloppy. Just because you're allowed to wear a tee shirt doesn't make you be, doesn't make you sloppy person.
I'm like Clay said, you talk about the hoodie. They, they all, they're gonna push the envelope more and more and they'll be on their head and they'll have their pants down. I agree with you, let's, let's go ahead with this. And if it still, if it becomes a problem, we'll have to revisit it.
But your, good point is it's gonna come down to what the administrators see in the enforcement of that.
Right, I hate to put more on them, I really do. I mean, instead of trying to enforce dress code, they've got more important things to do. I understand that, but.
And the hoodies, that wasn't our idea.
I know.
You know, they brought that to us.
I, I'm exactly right, so.
That's what I'm saying, their, their word is worth more.
Go with it.
And I, I agree with that completely. I wanna make it easier on the administrators, but that was, going back to the video, I didn't know we were gonna revisit that, but since we are, you know, that was almost more of a, we don't want to enforce this rule. More than anything, what I read into that, it wasn't that it wasn't a good rule and wasn't that it wasn't enforced, but I just really didn't seem to want to enforce that. I'm fine with that, cause if you want to change it, then let's, let's change it. There's a mechanism, it's our policy, we can make you read whatever we wanna read. I, I really don't wanna have to revisit this thing every month. I wish there was a way that we could just delegate the authority to the administrators to fit and choose how you want your dress code being your building and you enforce what, the way you, you have a better idea of what you need to do than what we do. And to set a code, you know, that's going to be effective and fair from the middle school all the way to the high school is kinda hard to do.
Yeah.
And I agree, you know. I don't have a problem with tee shirts. I, I, I don't have a problem, again, I don't have a problem with what they wear, it needs to be appropriate. I'm more concerned about other things that need to be going on out there than what they're, what they're wearing. I think we're opening the door though for some more problems, I agree. What Mr. Norris said, I think you've already visited several times.
Any other discussion? Everybody have an opportunity to share? Who's the, uh, the motion second? It's Carol.
Yes, it was second, okay.
Well, the motion has been made and seconded on, and I'll try to restate, uh, for the vote, uh, the no belts required, shirts can be untucked on any solid color or Chester County related shirts, hoodies, uh, all that would apply on the upper part of the body, the solid color or the school related. And the pants, shirt, shorts and skirts must be any solid color and no, uh, jeans, athletic shorts, yoga, exercise pants. With continued policy that's already in place. Uh, so that would be the, that would be the motion and the second that we have on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On the posts? So, all right, the next item we want to look at tonight is a, in your packet, you have the reflection on the, or Troy's gonna reflect all the items in your packet, the 2021 winter, spring coaches evaluations that are now out.
This is, uh, I shared with you in the packet. I, I have not generated a document like what you're seeing in your packet. This is providing you on the first page, the actual questions posed that the, that the coaches, and again, we do this in the fall after our fall sports seasons. We do this in the spring after our winter and spring sports seasons. Every coach, regardless of their role, a head coach or assistant coach would be responsible for self-reflection on these first 14 questions, ranking themselves, scores one through five. One would be the lowest and five would be the highest score. And then in the additional five questions that the head coaches themselves had to respond to for themselves, uh, that gives them a total of 19 questions they respond to. And again, the same structure of scoring, one is the lowest, five is the highest. And then for each assistant coach, um, the head coach will also reflect on their perspective of the assistant coaches' practices, again, based on the first 14 questions. And also you have a building principal representative, Clay did it for the high school, and an administrator or, or an athletic director's perspective is included. So for every head coach, you have a self and you have an assist or athletic director and then a building principal. And then for every assistant coach, when sports have those, you'd actually have themselves as their self-reflection, including the head coach, athletic director and, uh, building principal or a principal. So what I've shared with you on the second page is just, the first page being what the overall head coaching score was based on these results and what the overall assistant coaches' scores were on their results. And again, that's overall. And then to give you that as a, as a comparison to of each one of the sports, this is just a total collection and an average score for the sports of girls' basketball, boys' basketball, boys' soccer, baseball, softball, tennis, track on the first page. And then you see the same arrangement for our winter and spring sports for our junior high. Uh, again, the goal of this is not just to score just for the sake of scoring. For them, it gives a chance for a head coach, for an athletic director or a building principal to have follow-up conversations with coaches regarding their past season's performance, perspectives that the athletic director, coaches and building or administrator has regarding what he or she has seen as far as areas to target for improvement. It gives them a very definite set of statements that you can build some good quality feedback around for improvement in the future. I know from my conversations with Clay that we have had some dialogue between us about some of the conversations he's had with coaches in reflection. Of course, Clay was a multi-sport player and coach, so he comes at it from somebody in the knowledge base, not somebody who heard it said. Uh, but I see the benefit of it, not just to say you're, you're labeled as either an effective or ineffective coach. Anything that's three or higher is considered at or above average. So that kinda gives a perspective, that's what our teachers are accustomed to also with our team evaluation. Anything three or higher is considered at or above average. So it's kinda following the same suit and hopefully the, the coaches can see where those who are scoring higher or lower can target areas for improvement because it gets very specific with these statements that are shared. So that's gonna be, unless you have some opposition to this structure, that's gonna be my format in the future years. I never found a good way of sharing that information to the board in the past, but I like the structure of it where you see the overall score and once the ranking in comparison for each individual coach, given the collection of those who evaluated their performance.
Any feedback, the questions on our coaches' evaluations?
Any feedback, the questions on our coaches' evaluations? All right, next we'll look at staffing changes. There've been some since our last meeting, so here's another thing on those.
And this week also, ladies and gentlemen, we've had a our new teacher, uh, in orientation this week, started on Monday, yesterday, we continued it today. It will continue through Thursday. Those certified new hires, as far as the educators in that top section have been attending. Now, a few of these, uh, are like returning to, um, uh, their role, previous role. One is not included, but one left, uh, at the end of the 2021 school year and with a career pursuit out of education, but now she's coming back. She's, um, one of the middle school teachers, realizing that the choice that she made over the summer was not the best choice. So she, uh, was offered grace to come back and so she's gonna be in addition to this that we did not have at the time that we last looked at it, uh, in the last month's meeting. But we've had some really good conversations with those in the last couple of days and I look forward to working with these, uh, this year.
Any questions, comments? All right, the next item we have is, of course, we have our superintendent evaluation and, uh, after some opportunities to look that over, we have some reflection on that from Troy.
Well, and, uh, I had a good encouraging word from the from the board chair. Um, and I appreciate the 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 added vote of confidence for the for the improvement from the previous year. Uh, it went up a significant amount in one year, so I appreciate that vote of confidence. Uh, and as I shared in my reflection, because again, I don't want to put this on the shelf as it being just something that has to be done. But how can you take it out of just a compliance-only part of my workload? But look at it, how can it be constructed? So again, those two areas that are still targeted for improvement would be the staff and personnel relationships and then also the vision. Um, you know, and again, I addressed those points within those two areas of the evaluation to target for continued improvement. And I, based on the previous year, I think that a an increase of 5.6 that I've never realized before is pretty significant, say that I'm working toward the right direction and I appreciate the vote of confidence. But as you see there, that of these two areas, I plan to approve or improve in those areas at least by a total of four points each for the collection. And those efforts to do that are with the benefit of people like Ms. Carol up front who is Johnny on the spot to make sure every staffer who has a birthday in the district is given a an electronic card. And I get a lot of feedback from the staff when they receive that. Now, uh, fortunately or unfortunately, there's there's no money attached to the gifts, but the fact that it's they're recognized by somebody in addition to their actual family or friends, that their work family is also being acknowledged, their celebration day, uh, that it does help. And, uh, it's been a growing, uh, for participation. And I've gotten, again, with what we use for that electronic card, it does afford the opportunity if you, well, I think most of you've got one before. So you know you have that opportunity to send a thank you back and many or most of those do send a thank you for thinking of me card back to you. So it's it's a positive message there. And again, talking about the vision, you know, it's something that we that I this past year, because of most of our meetings being virtual only or distance learning only, uh, I do plan, as I've already shared with a few of the principals and will continue this week as I meet with the rest of the administration, I do plan for this school year to have a day set aside where I'm in the campuses uh, at least a week or every other week where I'm spending the day with them, not to catch people doing something wrong, but just getting into the mix of things and having some good stories to share with you, to share with the community, uh, to report out through the social media outlets that we use about some excellent things. You know, it doesn't take a whole lot of effort for me monthly to come up with you and to have something to celebrate. But I know that there's more than just something that happens once a month. So we're gonna be investing more effort and time. And through that, uh, opportunity to share the positives, it's also gonna give me an opportunity to make sure that we're all uh, following the same path of continued success for our students to learn.
And I meant to mention at the beginning, but just for the record, for those who uh, for exactly what we're talking about is the board, uh, once a year does a superintendent evaluation on different criteria. And this year, the score, it's a 900-point scale. It went from 801 to 846. So we appreciate you for your job well done.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Norris didn't have one.
I was like Norris. I thought you were gonna come.
Hey, when you go to the schools, when you go to the schools.
Yes, sir.
Pull that tie off.
Yes, sir. You got it. That's an easy fix.
You know, I've always told you, sit behind the desk as I got to. But you also can get after my hand and.
Yes, sir.
Help reason to school.
Yes, sir. Get back to work, right?
Yeah.
All right, finally tonight, there will be a message going out to our stakeholders in the community about, uh, things they have questions and announcements for the upcoming school year. That'll be going out, but first tonight, give you a chance to have a preview of that that Troy's providing.
And again, ladies and gentlemen, almost to the year, this time last year, I sent something similar to to reflect on how there was gonna be a new normal in our school district. Because we had a lot of questions coming out about what is COVID, how's it gonna impact our school setting? Well, through some of the incidental conversations of people, for one, asking about dress code, but two, are we having to wear masks? Uh, what's the plan even with schools from some of the school administrators? What's gonna be our policy or plan for how we're gonna be inviting people in? Or is it gonna be continuation of what we're currently doing? That's why I wanted to generate this letter. But first, again, I treat it to you as a draft. It is a draft that I solicit your feedback. You've had a chance for a day or two or more to read this, to look at what's included. I glean your feedback, so don't feel like that I am offended if there's something that you feel like needs to be added or revised or removed. That's why I wanted to do this and this structure because after this conversation this evening, later this week, I'll be pushing this message out through remind message to all. So again, in the remind message board, just like I reflected, I didn't mention it in directly, but through that remind message, we're sending hundreds of thousands of messages a year. It is a very effective tool to push out messages that is safe and secure and we can actually track who opens it and who receives it or who just leaves it there. So again, I I I glean your feedback if you see something that needs to be in addition revised or removed.
The dress code adjustments.
Yes, I will pending this. This was something I was working off of, but yes, that will be based on the motion that passed tonight. I will make that adjustment. Thank you.
I don't know which draft I'm looking at, parts or state. But the one I'm looking at is the public access to public, to school events.
Yes, sir.
Maybe we can relax them, but I don't think we need to get back the way we were. Open the door and let everybody come in.
I agree. Well, in the the places where it was more critical than others, where there are some practices, not every school faced some of the practices that others had felt like it was just the social norm. We've already talked to those administrators about it. And again, we're gonna continue to respect the door that they have to be buzzed in. Uh, as you know, as been shared before, when you have circumstances with IEP meetings, 504 meetings, even I talked to principals today, there has been an additional benefit where we've had more participation by families because of the virtual opportunity. Because sometimes families just don't have the means or the time or want to take the means or the time to come to the school to physically be present. And they are preferring or have preferred doing in a virtual setting or by phone call, which we've always had that phone call option. It just never rarely got entertained because we felt like that the physical presence was the only way. I would say also, parent-teacher conferences, I complimented the work that was done this past year, both in the fall and the spring. Personally, as a parent of two in the school system this year, I was able to a a address what I who I need to talk to in the conference of my office with just in a few 30 minutes to an hour window, where if I had to go physically and wait in line, it would have been a while longer, at least several hours longer. And as some had told me after, some teachers and other parents who offered feedback, they liked the opportunity to have in that virtual setting for the parent-teacher conference because they didn't have to worry about private matters that they were talking to their teacher about that somebody might be eavesdropping, not intentionally, but just waiting for their next turn. So there's things that we were doing this past year that have proven successful and beneficial, including that and in always including the virtual options as a meeting opportunity.
Was that about awkward?
It was.
Okay.
It was.
Okay.
And in fact, at the junior high with my daughter, I had all their teachers in the room at one time. So it was an opportunity to have feedback from all the teachers regarding my own child's academic performance. And I could glean from them, not having to try to recall what somebody said about math or science when I was talking to the English teacher. So it was beneficial at the junior high. I would say also, as it's reflected here, that if there's a must-have meeting, an emergency from a parent or family's perspective, still, it is my recommendation that they give the administration of the school at least a 24-hour or at least a day notice because sometimes in those critical situations to where a family feels like, I need to have X teacher present, that teacher may have already experienced their planning time, which is the more flexible time that they can go to a meeting. So rather than requiring that teacher to leave their classroom, assign a sub or assign a paraprofessional to be in the room in place of where there's no learning going on, give that teacher an opportunity to prepare for that meeting and also work it around when they already have a designated time during the day that they couldn't be. So there's, again, there's some great things that we learned last year. Uh, there are some things that we know that we can go back as we were doing before, but it's gonna be a lot less of people just walking in and you're unsure about the security and safety, about knowing, not knowing who's walking in a campus unsolicited.
Any additional feedback on the the forthcoming announcement? All right, finally, you have a list of updates for a busy time of year with the summer cleanup and things going on and capital projects. And, uh, if you have any questions, feel free to mention those if you want to just like on any of those.
Uh, Coach G is here. Do you have any direct questions with cleanup? I I would say complimentary to Britt because each year he seems like he refines what he did last year and makes it better. This year, it seems to be a more effective tool or a way of doing it, even though we've had a shorter summer because we've had more kids in school this summer because of the summer camps now, two of additional campuses that we didn't have before. Uh, but we've had our custodians remain at their schools of record, so you don't have groups of custodians going to an unfamiliar campus, not knowing where everything is. Now you've got the 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 custodians of the building being the the persons responsible for all the cleanup and care, so they know where all the resources are and it seems to be a much more efficient and effective way of doing it.
Any questions for Britt or?
We've had UHVAC. Could you give an update on the HVAC?
They're they're waiting on a few more for the junior high, but I think the complete installation, Jack's Creek, Westchester, Middle School, they might be waiting on one at Middle School, but I know most of the ones they're waiting on are, there were back orders and just waiting, but, uh, pretty much mostly complete and went well. I mean, the McCoy's did most of the work on the weekend, so you really never, very little interruptions.
Britt, the unit center back order, is there gonna be a problem?
I hope not. It's not supposed to. They should come in this week. They said middle of July.
Good.
And they would get them installed. And they told me there wouldn't be any.
Well, Norris, I would say also, though, every school district, I say every, many school districts that got this Easter funds have found a way of using those funds specifically to improve their HVAC, whether they're doing the same as us or whether they're just upgrading their existing systems. I would bet that the supply list is much smaller than it was this time last year.
We've been very fortunate on a lot of the things that are in short demand. We've we've always been just one step ahead. Like when the diesel supply or the gas supply went bad, we had just filled up the tanks. So it didn't, you know, so we've just, we've been very fortunate for that.
Britt, the bids that are open, the house removals, what's which parking lot is that associated?
Parking lot one?
Yeah, it says house removals and parking lot.
That's on the ceiling property.
The ceiling property or the house, the two houses will get taken down.
Create parking lot.
Well, create a.
No, the parking lot.
Yeah, that's separate. We're talking about creating a development site where we can, for future expansion.
Gotcha. Well, that's with the house removal.
That's correct.
And the parking lots are re-ceiling, um.
All parking lots in general?
As much as we can do, as far as we can take.
With funding that's available. We have some new funding sources available that we can purpose for that research. So we're gonna carry it as far as it can go.
Any other questions? Any other thing that needs to come before the board tonight? All right, if not, I will share that our next meeting will begin our, uh, tour of different schools with our monthly meeting. And the August 19th meeting will be at the Chester County Junior High for our next Board of Education meeting. With that being said, is there a motion that we adjourn?
I have my motion for adjourn.
We are adjourned.